Take your order please. Uh, first item of business will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, from the ground, in whose name the government shall serve.
We have roll call please.
Chris Morley.
Here.
David Vazquez. Matt Krueger.
Here.
Robin Platt.
Here.
Nina Frankoff here. Amy Case. Here. Riz Del.
Here.
Bill Maloff. Jerry Gensley.
Here.
Amanda Hall on here.
Thank you. Next item of business is the consensus items that we received in our email package.
I make a motion that we pass the consensus items that were emailed to us.
A motion by Tina and second by Matt to pass the consensus items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Now we'll move to audience participation. Anybody that's not on the agenda? Okay, that will move us to old business. First will be the water tower grant. I really don't know.
We're keeping it on there until we get it, so.
What's your report? Yeah, we've.
We just signed the contract since then and now we just have to deal with budget and stuff.
Sign the contract for the water tower?
GMS to.
Okay.
So I take the lead. It still has to go through SCAD first for the uh, Energy Impact Grant. We've got a mountain of paperwork and thirty emails already this week, but we'll get there, I guess.
That's about all.
Yeah, until that. I mean, they're just trying to fill out the application until December first and then from that point it'll go to that project needs assessment and they'll do what they have to do and it'll just kind of skip around until we get to. And that was our luckier element, but. Holding pattern for now, yeah. Do we have a question about that? Alright. Uh, next item would be job descriptions, which I'm sure we'll.
We'll probably table.
Table and tell Mr. Maloff is here. He has all that information. And the same with the landlord utilities. It's also, we've got nothing until he's here, so.
So I motion that we table old business B and C job descriptions and landlord utilities until the presence of our attorney.
One second.
Motion by Robin and a second by Tina to table items B and C of old business. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. So let's move to rec committee board, see mail reports, classes.
Rec is doing great. Volleyball came to, volleyball football came to an end. Up next is basketball for K through two. Have three teams. I'll get coaches and all that together later. Registration for third and fourth grade starting November fourth, deadline is December second. And both will start practice well. One will start practicing here at the end of this month and the other at the end of next month. But nothing bad.
They still play K through two in Rocky Ford?
On Mondays. That's the one that we have three teams on. But I just have coaches yet. Well, I do, but I haven't assigned an email.
Uh, we have, Amanda and myself have a DOLA workshop on the nineteenth of November, next Tuesday. Supposed to be kind of a fun workshop to help us out with the grant stuff, which kind of actually is perfect because we'll take whatever information we can get there, so hopefully you learn something. And any report on that classes?
Where's your media?
Lamar. Kel, Kelcocks, right? Alright, let's move to new business and first one will be Arkansas Valley Hospice proclamation. You guys have something you wish to say or are you just here to witness that?
Well, we're here to witness. Um, we do appreciate everybody that supports Arkansas Valley Hospice. Uh, we are your only local hospice. Uh, we have been in the valley since um, the eighties. Started in the hospital as a volunteer and then went into an actual organization. And we have been around since that long. I can't calculate that fast, but almost forty years, so. Um, I just want to say thank you for all those who support us and we appreciate your, your dedication to us and support. Sure.
Okay. Whereas it is the mission of Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated to provide quality mind, body, and spirit patient-centered care while supporting, serving, and educating our community about end-of-life tribulations. Whereas the provision of quality hospice and palliative care upholds the dignity of every individual regardless of age, health, social status, citizenship, race, or religion, ensuring that all stages of life are treated with respect and care. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated provides high-quality hospice and palliative care services to patients with terminal and chronic illnesses. Their compassionate team, including physicians, nurses, social workers, health aides, and clergy focuses on the needs and wishes of patients and their families. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated addresses the emotional, spiritual, and family needs beyond physical treatment, offering services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated prioritizes patients at all programs, including hospice care. They ensure a coordinated, patient-led approach that respects individual choices and needs, aiming to enhance the quality of life for both patients and family caregivers. Whereas each year individuals living with terminal and chronic illnesses receive compassionate care through the programs offered by Arkansas Valley Hospice. This support extends to the communities of Lohontto, Rocky Ford, Fowler, Manzanola, Swink, Ordway, Olney Springs, Crowley, Shicker City, Los Anamos, Arlington, Haswell, Sharaw, Hasty, Avondale, Boone, and Kim. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated relies on community donations to support patient care, allowing services to be provided at no charge. It is the only local hospice where donations stay within the community. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated volunteers assist with the needs of those living with terminal and chronic illnesses and that of their family and loved ones. Whereas hospice and palliative care providers at Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated encourage everyone to educate themselves about available care options and to communicate their preferences with family members, loved ones, and healthcare professionals. Before I read this last part, which says we're going to do this, uh, I guess I would need a motion for somebody to accept that, please.
I have a motion. We accept the Arkansas Valley Hospice proclamation.
A second. A motion by Robin and a second by Tina to accept the proclamation of Arkansas Valley Hospice. All those in favor? Say aye, please. Those opposed? Thank you. So I will write here, I, Chris Morley, as mayor of Swink, proclaiming November twenty twenty-four as hospice and palliative care month. And call upon the citizens of Swink, Colorado to join Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated to increase their understanding and awareness of hospice and palliative care and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all of you.
Thank you.
Do you guys need this one?
Or a copy, either one, but could we get a picture with that as well? I'll have Amber and Chris and I'll take a picture.
No.
Thank you, guys.
Next item will be the Grand Theater membership donation insert first date minutes. And I'll, soon she comes back, we'll get that. I'll take her file. Oh, here's a picture. I saw that, right?
It was her.
But I saw nothing.
What's that? So we've moved to the Grand Theater and I don't know if you guys read that. They were asking for.
They want me to just put it inside our statements so that everybody, every resident can get this copy.
This?
If they want to donate or not, so. Then we'd have to put this all in our statements.
That's a small envelope, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna have to use big ones.
Just the one month, alright?
What is it for?
Donations for the Grand Theater. Oh yeah, received by December thirty-first, so we would need it in the December statements is what would happen.
Yeah, November's too late.
Come on, Amanda, you can work over here, don't. Congratulations, by the way.
Thanks.
So do you want a motion for that or are we just going to yay and aye?
So what is the.
Probably need a motion. I'm, well, I don't know. I don't get a motion for this. Probably just need someone to put it in there.
Only if we choose to donate some to it, isn't it?
No, we're not donating. It's for.
They're trying to reach out to all the locals to get donations, more donations for the Grand Theater outside of Rocky Ford.
Yeah.
So is there any reason why, I know, I know it's going to be time-consuming for the two hundred bills. Is it, it's okay for you though? And we need the envelopes?
We're gonna have to have them. I mean, if I say there's no.
It's just a great building and we, and you know, I want the community to be able to support it, so I don't. I'll be glad to come down and help and stuff. Do you want to do it?
We're not gonna make it here. Everybody wants to say they want to help, but ain't nobody else.
Yes, you can. No, you're the ten, not the first.
So we don't need a motion, we just gonna do it?
Yeah. Okay, next item will be a little discussion about whether we want to have a Christmas party. If we do, what kind of Christmas party do we want? That kind of thing. If we do potluck or we can meet at a restaurant. Now, bear in mind, the meeting as of now would be scheduled for seven o'clock, so if we do it after there.
We, well, we can make it.
Pretty, oh, that's what I'm saying. As of now, it's.
Seven o'clock is late.
It's gonna be seven, but if we're gonna do that, we probably should have the meeting.
Do you guys want to have it here again? You want to have it over there again? You want it somewhere? I like it having.
Potluck, I've been doing?
It's fine with me. Works, it's inexpensive, everybody chips in.
We probably should have the meeting.
At six?
Six o'clock. So we're not so late. Nobody wants to eat at nine o'clock. We're out of the ordinances and stuff to go through again in December, so the meeting shouldn't be that long, but you never know. We don't know what.
The other thing, do you want the meeting on a Friday or do you want the meeting still on a Wednesday? Because we're having a potluck, I guess.
A Friday.
I just don't want it all over.
Right, right.
But if it's a Friday, I won't be able to get there. Yeah, Wednesday's at six to four, Friday's on Sunday eight. I may not be able to. I mean, I mean, then you guys can change it to Friday, that's fine. I can come by later when I get off work. We just won't be there for the potluck. That's not like we're gonna stay out late. And even worse, Friday.
Because it's Wednesday.
What?
Nobody's gonna stay out late on Wednesday.
Well, even if it's Friday, I'm gonna be back to work at eight in the morning, so, on Saturday, so.
They would have been earlier on Saturday than they do on Wednesday. Alright, so we do, meeting at six o'clock. Do the potluck afterwards over there. White elephant gift for the family members. Some gift.
Yeah, and whoever wants to participate bring one, so if.
Yeah, if you don't, you don't.
I mean, if someone brings three people with them, we're gonna be there.
Anything for the cook, any for the food?
Yeah, what do we want? We don't want.
Didn't we send out a sign-up sheet last year?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, last year you did the pork, right? Was that the year before?
Last year.
Last year. Anybody feel anything strong?
I like food.
I like Mexican food.
I like food.
Want everyone to bring Mexican or do like a taco bar?
I guess we could think about that along with, Tina, if we could figure that part out.
So, we can talk about that, we can text whenever we're there. Like just round a bunch of hamburger, everybody brings, you know, sour cream cheese and build your own tacos.
Alright, if you're celebrating tortillas, if you want to have a burrito and. If you can bring refined beans, just to put it on. You can have a double decker tacos.
If you want, yeah. Do you get one more beat up?
Sounds pretty good.
Yeah. Taco bar and then we can do some desserts.
So when it gets closer, I'll just send out a.
I'll bring the cheesecake.
Can we have? One or two servings?
Whatever. I know.
There, it's always in the oven.
But like, I know, let me get it cooked. Warm that oven up, Amanda, I'm on my way. How much taco meat you think we'd need for, how many were there? Thirty?
Twenty-five. Well, we won't have four in his life, so there's two less.
We can get numbers, but I can cook all the tacos.
Thirty would be safe.
Eight times nine.
I like these five times.
So what, twenty-five, thirty? Yeah, because I'm gonna want like three tacos, okay.
What's the, uh, what's the price limit on that?
I think it was like twenty bucks?
Twenty bucks, seventeen, sorry, yes.
Twenty, twenty-five bucks?
Yeah, I think most of them were twenty-five, because I got twenty-five dollars in lottery tickets.
Oh, that's right, you're right, yeah.
I think it was twenty-five, but whatever, yeah. That's what I thought. I thought I got twenty-five dollars.
I think it was twenty-five.
Somewhere around there.
And we can change it if you'll.
Good. The budget public hearing. Budget twenty-four dash one. This will be an ordinance summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting the budget for the town of Swink, Colorado for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January two thousand twenty-five, ending the last day of December two thousand twenty-five. As far as budget goes, from last time, I, I think we changed, the last meeting, we changed uh, we changed something in the general fund because we were up a little more there. We were up about ten thousand dollars in the general fund now. Uh, all of them look good except for the water, which we all know the water is the one where all the problems seem to be. And we were down, I believe, twenty-six thousand and change on that one. Okay, even better. So general fund, we're up ninety-eight hundred dollars. Uh, water, we are down, we're in the negative twenty-six thousand eight fifty. Trash, we're in the positive thirty-five thousand. Sewer, we're positive sixty thousand. And conservation trust, we're down a little bit, which we, we don't have any income there, so it's always going to be in the negative as far as conservation trust, so.
But that's with depreciation, right?
Yes.
So it's.
That all has depreciation.
Yes, depreciation is a certain amount in each.
And that's fifty thousand for water, for part of our tower.
We have fifty thousand.
That is also.
Technically, we are still, as far as hard money, we're still in the positive, but I mean, it looks, it looks bad now because we haven't taken that fifty thousand and put it where we need to yet, but we know we're gonna have to put it along the line somewhere here, so yeah.
So, and that's all about where county works for the water towers, the fifty grand.
And once we find out whatever we, we get there, then we'll have to go forward from there. There'll probably be a, either a specialized budget or if we get the loan that we're after, then there'll be a certain amount every year for that loan fee or whatever, but. It's hard to, to come up with a number yet, because we don't know what that number is going to be.
We have to have a supplemental ledger, I have no idea. Because we don't even know where we're getting it.
We do not. I mean, we're all sitting here like that because we've got three funds, we're really trying to, or three grants and pools of money we're trying to get from, so.
We just pray, alright, guys?
Cross our fingers we get a lot of it and then it'll, it'll help us out on the other end, but. So I will need somebody.
So this one is, you gotta do it separate. So this, they need this. This is one, so they need them.
Yeah, this one, no, I know, we gotta do one. So somebody, we will entertain a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one.
I make a motion to pass the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one, adopt budget, first reading.
Second. Second. You met, have a motion by Tina and a second by Matt to pass the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, that motion passes. Okay, let's move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two, setting the mill levy. This is an ordinance levying general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-five to help defray the costs of government for the town of Swink, Colorado for the twenty twenty-five budget year and for the mill levy on each dollar's worth of property as per the assessed value thereon as shown by the assessor of Otero County for the year twenty twenty-five as fixed by the Board of Equalization.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two, set mill levy, first reading.
Second. I have a motion by Tina and a second by Matt to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two, setting the mill levy, first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We will move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash three, appropriation of the budget. This is an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds in the amount and for the purposes set forth below for the town of Swink, Colorado for the year twenty twenty-five budget year. And those are the numbers that we just talked about being up ninety-eight hundred dollars in the general fund, down twenty-six in the water, up thirty-five in trash, up sixty thousand in sewer, and down three in conservation trust.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash three, appropriation of budget, first reading.
Second. I have a motion by Tina and a second by Matt to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash three, the appropriation of the budget, first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, passes. Alright. That done stuff is done, alright. We are to information. Does anybody have any information they would like to share?
Just a question, if you found out anything on the shop?
Uh, they had a structural engineer come in Monday and he's gonna go through insurance, helping it out. I spoke with him on the phone Monday afternoon. Uh, he said, you know, based on his opinion, I mean, no engineers here can do better than anybody here, but I can, you know, I can repair that building, you know, but it's all on cost, he said. But his opinion, it'd be cheaper to take it down and just put a proof-backed steel building in if we're just using it for storage, but that's all on the insurance company, whatever they want to do or.
I think. In my opinion, it would be beneficial to just do it all over the new shop.
No, put something out on the north side next to trucks right there?
Just do a new two on the north side.
Or right on the north side of the building?
Is there a door that opens back there?
No.
Because you already have a wall there. It doesn't have to be imposed, it could just be a, a gate across or something on the north side.
Just for lawnmowers and everything?
Right, so just to secure it. It doesn't have to be air-tight or anything like that. That's just my opinion. Look at prices, do a map instead of, you know, like a big building. Where, if you put it back where it's at.
It's gonna happen again.
Just a matter of time. I just think of it. That way they could, you could leave what's there there, get that built and then you very quickly can tear it down without having to do stuff.
Yeah, we're gonna start moving everything over probably next week, start driving, because I gotta make a pile out back with all the stuff that's dirt destroyed. They said we gotta keep that until the claims, whatever. Yeah. And then, uh, we've already made room in the shop for the side trailer and Christmas lights and, yeah, we've made room inside the shop. But I know there's a lot of, we've got tables and chairs, but we, we're gonna put that back like street sweepers, so we've made room in the shop to kind of accommodate for right now.
You didn't have to do it, like you need something for the lawn mower.
Yeah, lawnmowers, side trailer, not really, well, side trailer, it kind of, kind of heat. I mean, we can put it in the shop right now, but in the summertime, it'll get in the way. You'll have to move it every time you need to get, you know. So definitely need something that locks up, but I, I understand what you're saying. It's gonna happen again.
If anything else, I mean, we probably need the store. I don't know anybody that doesn't need more store anymore.
You just put a concrete something up so they don't.
Have to see what insurance says and what kind of money we're talking about, what we can mess with here, then we can.
I mean, maybe even cheaper, I mean.
Like options.
I could get a forty, forty-yard storage container, like shipping container, I mean. There's ships full of those out there, man. I mean, you can get those pretty cheap. I mean, even a couple of those, they have a height of building. You might put two twenty-yarders, even the smaller ones, the twenty cubes or twenty-two ones.
Then those other two, the little ships you have there, they don't have to be, they'll, they'll look funny sitting out there by themselves.
Yeah, we got, uh, whitewashing that little one in the back by the tower and then the one up front is all the decks for the apartment. We have to move stuff around and make room for all the.
After so many, past few years, they've got, you can't open it, you can't close it.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's really a wide decision to go to, especially with insurance.
If you open them more often than not, they, they, they work better than if they sit, because at the coffee plant, we used to open them once a week, so we never had a problem with them. They sat outside, oh, twelve years' hours early, so I'd get them stuck all the time on them.
I open and shut those every day.
Yeah. Yeah, plus they're creature-proof, they're waterproof, they float.
Can you put, can you put the lawnmowers in? You can't, right? You drive right into it? You can drive right into it?
Put a ramp on the front. I like that idea.
Get some, hold on, wait for the adjuster.
Get some numbers on paper so you know who's looking at it.
Yep, I'll call around, start calling around. I'll call J's up there, line up.
And the sewer part of that is being built now?
Uh, yeah, I already talked to Rory at WFI and he, he said, don't be surprised if you start seeing stuff showing up, so. He's gonna, he wants to get on it and he's gonna bring a truck down, he's gonna clean everything out, do all that. Yeah, and he said even if he contracts it up to somebody else, Rory said he'd be down here every day to make sure it was done right.
I've had some questions after this weekend's snow about why the streets aren't, the snow hasn't removed and I, my answer to that was I think we don't have the equipment to move that heavy snow, but I don't know if I'm right on that, but I was wondering, do we need to look at getting something?
I was, I was asked by a few, uh, people as well and I, I, I think I know where we, we have been on the deal, but not that it's going to happen, but in case that we do have some monumental snowfalls here, would it be wise to have a contingency plan? I mean, even if it's hired out or something, I mean, is that something we should maybe look into?
Have you guys drove around Lohontto?
Have the manpower here to.
But have you drove around Lohontto and seen what, um, snowplowed their streets did?
Oh, really? I'm not saying.
It does stir, it does stir.
They took up like a layer of their chip and seal.
Uh.
But I mean, like, the streets aren't that bad. You can get down.
It's just the middle. People get mad when they can't move over.
Well, it's, it was a storm.
Right. We've had the snow plows in the past. We've had, we've had deep snow plows in the past. We have so many dips.
You can't
It creates a bigger hazard. And you go down a dip and the dip is that deep and then the snow is on top of it. So now you're stuck.
Yeah, in the street.
And you know, so you, there's really nothing you could do. You, the streets that are flat, you can plow. But then you plow back in front of somebody's driveway or plowing their car in. We got more complaints every time we plowed than we didn't plow. And like I said, there's so many dips that you can't get through and the truck will get stuck. So then you gotta get the back rock to get the truck and stuff.
Moral thing.
Yeah, you just spin your wheels for nothing. And you know, we have streets without dips and stuff. It makes sense to go plow, but we don't have that.
Wanna get a plow?
You know, we, we tried years and years and years to do it. We've got the county to come in a couple of times. It makes sense. No, we're not doing so. Too many dips.
I agree, I agree.
Every once in a while they'll do Main Street.
Right.
Um, just on my way to get to you should be waiting on Main Street.
It's good to know that I know.
I figured sort of where I just was curious if anybody had a thought of that or not saying anything needs to be done. I'm just asking the question. I didn't know. I mean, I think I knew I'd have been down in the past, but
The amount of snow we got in those kinds of snowstorms, if you're part of
I agree, yeah.
You wouldn't have kept up with that anyway.
If you have more than a snowstorm, the streets will be open by now. It's just, you can't justify getting equipment just on a snowstorm every ten or twelve years. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Information?
No, that was gonna be my question. I mean, cause we're back behind the county. You know, they, they plowed from the shop down Sugar Road and then onto the down the whole break. It's, well, our road, we never get plowed. Our little road, so I just thinking the same thing. We don't have the dips. Y'all do. But I don't want my road tore up because it hurts.
And usually, usually one of the harder streets to plow because everybody parks there. So
Oh, it's worse now.
I tell the guys, don't even go down over the streets we
No. You can't. Sometimes you can't even get through with a car.
Yeah, it's, the only ones go out there. Nope.
So yeah, our roads got worse.
Any information? Alright, I have a motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn. Seven thirty-four P M.